And welcome everyone to this special meeting to to discuss parking enforcement and get a status update. I know that this has been a subject for many emails that have been coming into the city. And so it's a great conversation for us to have at this time. I am going to call us to order and ask the clerk to call rule.
Pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Pappin.
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Oh, she's not, um, she'll be joining us in a moment. Uh, councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
And Mayor Gogol.
I'm also here, uh, and I understand councilmember Lee's technology issues. I had a whole laptop thing that requires onsite maintenance later today. So that's a whole nother thing, but I sympathize. Um, for now, we are going to be discussing parking enforcement and receive an update. So we're going to receive a presentation, uh, from our parking enforcement team. And I see, uh, our traffic sergeant Shannon Hagan with us, uh, along with others. So welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to share my screen. Is it okay if I just jump in?
Please.
Okay. Just give me a second. I'm also having technical difficulties. A second here. There you go. Just waiting for the share screen to start. There we go, share screen. Start. Can everyone see the slides?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Very good. Thank you, councilmembers. Apologize for the delay on that. Okay, so back in, uh, 2016 and 2017, the city experienced a rapid increase in traffic congestion and complaints regarding parking and disabled or not disabled, but abandoned vehicles. Uh, complaints flowed in from the citizens and neighborhood associations. Every time we attended a, uh, meeting, uh, there was a strong message from our community that something needed to be done about parking inventory and the number of cars that are parking in our neighborhoods as well as in the business area and to, to have some enforcement. So there's some good parking turnover inventory. Enforcement demands began primarily for our residential parking permit areas, those, those RPP programs in our neighborhoods, uh, downtown street parking and garages, blocked driveways and wheelchair access. A big one is, uh, rolled curbs and wrong way vehicles, uh, parking with disable disability spaces, those are the handicap stalls, those were being abused. Uh, a lot of complaints about oversized and commercial vehicles in some very key areas in our city. There's a lot of construction going on and contractors were leaving their large earth moving machines and trucks in our residential neighborhoods. And then abandoned vehicles in general. And finally, with the expansion of street sweeping, there were neighborhoods that needed to have the vehicles move so that we could comply with federal laws in keeping the storm trains clear. And so those are important. An important tool is to have, uh, vehicles move so our street sweepers can do their job. Uh, some of the challenges that we faced while trying to meet those needs, we had, we had difficulty in attracting and retaining staff. All of our parking staff members were per diem employees and they were limited in the number of hours they could work. Uh, they were, many of them were college students or people that had education tied to their daily lives and were not able to work all the hours that they needed them to. There, there's a limit on per diem, how many hours they actually can work per year. It's a high turnover rate because kids are, they come in for the summertime, but then they go back to school in the fall. Uh, there's a, was insufficient level of supervision and advance support. So that resulted in a, in a significant gap in service in the community was not satisfied with what we could do. So we need to figure out a way to be more proactive as we were barely meeting the needs of being reactive. We were basically chasing complaints and just didn't have the staff to be able to do that. So a new concept was needed for parking enforcement. Uh, so council took the initiative back in 2018 to minimize parking impacts throughout the city as part of this strategic plan and has been updating that plan ever since. It continues in through 2021 with complete implementation of new service delivery model for contracted parking enforcement services with integrated FTEs and a dedicated to abandoned vehicle, uh, abatement. So I'll go over our timeline. Back in January of 2019, staff presented before council, a citywide parking enforcement analysis. And through that analysis, uh, council adopted staff's recommendation to seek a hybrid enforcement model to bring in a private contractor to provide essential parking enforcement services with the city maintaining vehicle payment operations. And that's important because vehicle payment often involves, uh, process of investigating complaints and working with community members to find adequate parking for their vehicles that they're storing on the street. And we're towing cars and we want to keep that because it's personal touch. It's also something that we take very seriously. We don't want to just inadvertently take people's cars off the street without being sure we're complying with the complexities of the laws of when and where we can't do that. So we kept that in-house. Uh, March of 2019, staff from Public Works and the police department formed a project charter to go out and seek a third-party contractor to provide essential parking enforcement services. And our goal back in March of 2019 was to target it start date of April of 2020. In May of 2019, city posted parking enforcement requests for proposals in compliance with our competitive bid process. And then in August of 2019, three companies gave presentations and were interviewed by a panel of city staff members. That led to November of 2019, we council approved an agreement with one of the three companies, Serco, and we entered into an agreement with Serco in November of 2019. Uh, in February, uh, on February 10th of 2020, we were happy to announce that Serco issued its first parking citation for street sweeping. Uh, we wanted to roll out a soft start for enforcement and street sweeping is a great way to do that because it's fixed. We know the routes and it's something that gave Serco some time to continue to hire staff and build out their program to meet our needs. Unfortunately, in March of 2020, COVID hit and the pandemic shelter in place orders went into effect and the city responded pretty quickly about suspending all street sweeping, RPP and neighborhood sign enforcement. This did allow people to stay in their neighborhoods, safe to not have to worry about receiving a ticket. Between April and May, Serco issued warning flyers for parking on the wrong side of the road. And in April of 2020, Serco issued 612 warning notices citywide for parking complaints that we continued to receive even while we were in the shelter in place period. In April of 2020, we hired our vehicle abatement officer. She started for the first time. I could report she was already one of our previous employees. She tested really well and has, uh, was he, it was easy for her to transition to her new role. We had essentially zero startup time with her. In May of 2020, we reduced Serco staff to five personnel. And this is one of the advantages of having a contracted employee or contracted services. So we can scale up and down as needed and it's pretty rapid. We could, we don't have to have the same complications to deal with if they were our employees. Serco, Serco absorbs that. And then in June of 15, the city resumed street sweeping, but we didn't continue, we didn't start up enforcement for another month. It was back in June of this year when staff gave council a downtown parking enforcement update. Uh, council adopted city's recommendations to resume citywide parking enforcement after a 30-day notification period. And this, this was for all enforcement, uh, items except for the non-two-hour RPP locations, which we'll talk about in just a second. Uh, city PIOs from police, public works and city hall embarked on a full media campaign. We wanted everyone to know that we were beginning to ramp up enforcement, that we didn't want to catch anyone off guard. Our staff, uh, messaged out on Facebook, Patch, our website, Twitter, Nixle, Instagram, Nextdoor, and we're passing out flyers and there were flyers posted throughout the city with an example on the right of your screen there. So I, we just mentioned about two-hour enforcement. If you look to the right, there's two signs. The one on top is an RPP zone sign for two-hour enforcement. And you'll see the wording at the very bottom of the site that says, except holidays or when a parking permit is displayed. On the bottom, there is a sign that says non-RPP zone. And you'll see the wording for the parking permit is not displayed. And so we're enforcing all parking regulations throughout San Mateo except for the bottom signs that are in neighborhoods and some of our commercial areas. And we feel that, uh, that we are trying to accommodate people who are working from home and distance learning. They don't have an RPP program, so having this, uh, the ability to be able to sit a little bit longer in front of their house makes sure that they don't have to step out every two hours and move their vehicle. It's working well in some areas without parking inventory issues, but there are some challenges and in areas where there are parking inventory issues, uh, we're trying to mitigate those and work with the people to get some compliance through warnings and other efforts. Uh, we're planning to continue not enforcing this at this time, targeting reassumption when schools resume and there's more operations in our daily lives. I don't think, I think we're all coming to realize that there's going to be no hard set back to normal. It's going to be a gradual transition from where we are today to, to normal. Uh, part of our goal with the new contracted services is to implement automatic license plate readers. We had a target date of July 2020 to have this implemented in our RPP zones. We've moved that date to November of 2020. We're on target to do, to do so. Eventually, the RPP, uh, neighborhoods and the ALPR implementation will evolve to include downtown area. What's great about, just as a reminder, ALPR services, it will streamline general enforcement with less staff as we will be able to electronically chalk to enforce time limited parking spaces in both our residential areas and as well as downtown. And LPRs will help reduce citizen, uh, citation errors by citizens who fail to properly display their parking permit. This is a big deal. Uh, one of our chief complaints from the community who receives RPP citations, they said, no, I got a permit, I just didn't put it on the window or I have it in the wrong location and the parking staff wasn't able to find it, so they're issuing a ticket. And they have, the, the citizen has to go through the appeals process to have that citation corrected or dismissed. And I'll talk about that appeals process. Uh, for many years, police staff routinely reviews hundreds of parking ticket appeals each month. So this, this is anybody who receives a ticket from a, in the city of San Mateo has the ability to appeal that citation. And that's codified in the, in the law under the California Vehicle Code. Instructions are printed in the back of every parking citation about how that process works and how to do the appeals or initiate the appeals process. Uh, appeals are submitted through TurboData, which is a third-party vendor who provides us with electronic citation equipment, the handheld ticket writers for both patrol officers and our Serco employees. They're not associated with Serco in any way. And so the only relationship they have together is that TurboData provides the hardware and then Serco issues the tickets and that electronic information is transmitted back to TurboData. Now, on our end, especially trained police staff carefully review each appeal. This is a big deal for our staff. They spend a lot of time, sometimes a little more than I would like them to, reviewing each appeal. They go out and they investigate to make sure that there's, uh, any information that they could use to help to make a decision of whether they should hold that ticket or not. And our staff is very lenient in its, in its appeal process. So if it, uh, hears an appeal from a citizen who says, uh, argument A, and that argument is found to be invalid, but the appeals officer or person sees that there's something else wrong with that ticket, we're going to go ahead and dismiss it. So they're, they're very generally in, in line with being more customer-centric than law enforcement-centric. Uh, if a citation is upheld, the violator may file a civil appeal with the San Mateo County Traffic Court. And then there's a, a trial before a traffic commissioner, just like there would be for a traffic ticket. It's rare that we go that far. There are occasions where that happens, but it is extremely rare. Uh, no changes in the appeals volume with Serco. As you'll see, the, uh, number of citations have gone up, but appeals numbers are about the same as they were when we were, uh, conducting traffic or parking enforcement in-house. Uh, citation fines comes up quite a bit where people think we're out there that are going to make money and we're going to make a lot of money if we start enforcing in a certain area. We hear that from, uh, both the people who receive tickets and the people who would like to see more tickets issued. Uh, citations are not written to generate revenue. Uh, fines are punitive for civil violations of the law. Uh, council sets the parking fine amount each year and these fine amounts are published in the city's comprehensive fee schedule and it's posted on our city website. Most parking tickets are either $42 or $46. Put that in perspective, if you ever received a red light ticket in San Francisco, the fine is $110. In San Jose, it's $56. So we're more than reasonable in our fine amounts. A portion of the fines are collected and sent to the county, courts, state and other assessments and fees. The allocations are based on what I consider complex formulas and it could be of any number of reasons that the percentage of the ticket could be sent to the state or the courts. There's, uh, maybe depending on the violation, a fixed rate or a flat rate or percentage based on the amount of internal funds collected. So it's, uh, for every 10 tickets, X number of dollars is sent to wherever. Bottom line is the city receives about 40 to 6% of base fines in, in revenue. So here's an important page about enforcement activity between last year and this year. And because of COVID and when we started back up enforcement, our scale is only two months. So July 15th to September 15th of 2019 versus the same time period in 2020. Now go over this because I want this guy to really give you an opportunity to see the numbers. Uh, the highlighted blue are the three top complaints that we received from our community for enforcement. Uh, street sweeping, as you can see from 2019, has gone up, uh, almost 1,200 and a half tickets. Uh, meter parking, which is essentially our downtown area and then it's along 25th Avenue and pockets area, areas like that. Actually, 25th Avenue does not have meter, I'm sorry. El Camino. And then there's, uh, posted signs and RPP has, uh, there's a decline there. That's because we're not enforcing the two-hour non-RPP signs. And you'll see that 1140.040 is in the municipal code section. That covers, that's a broad section used for both signs and unsigned or RP and non-RP, uh, signs. Uh, you can see red zones are up a bit, uh, parking and sidewalks are up, oversight vehicle because of our vehicle abatement officer out there. She's able to target and use that as a tool as opposed to, to, uh, towing a vehicle. Uh, feed the meter, that's something that, uh, is downtown and has to do with meter parking. Handicap stalls are up a bit. That's because there's more enforcement people driving around and they're hitting all the dukes and cranes and all the parking lots where there are, uh, handicap stalls. Uh, parking 18 inches from the curb is up a little bit. There's two sections that can be used. There's a vehicle section in the unique code. They're critical in its enforcement efforts. Uh, it's just a matter of whether the, uh, person riding the ticket chooses one or the other. Abandoned vehicles are up and that's because we have that dedicated person again. Uh, double parking in the downtown area, uh, there's a slight increase. And then parking on sidewalks or, I'm sorry, park on crosswalk. And then miscellaneous sections or has to do with registration violations, uh, vehicle tabs, uh, all the other things as shorter meter times or painted curves that you'll see. And so that's really not a number that's worth comparing. And then mornings from last year, our staff, when they were with the PD was 128 and then Serco issued 281. And so we're, so you can see the numbers there. Uh, citations, this is just a high-level view about what sort of percentage changes have occurred. You'll see that in 2019, for the same time period, uh, we issued 500 or 5,288 tickets versus 76, 86. That's a 45% increase, but also enforcement hours are up 41%. So there's a, it's a nice balance between, as you can see, with having more people out there, being more proactive, you'll, their, their relationship to the number of tickets that are being written are also in balance. And then citations per hour rate, 2.7 last year and 2.8. Again, it's just going to show you that we have more people out there, we're being more proactive and meeting the demands of parking enforcement and the, we're not, there's no magic increase. It's just that if you have people out there doing their jobs, they're going to get the tickets. Uh, citations have increased because of labor hours have increased. It's a rate at which citations have been issued per hour in enforcement has remained very similar. Uh, one of the complaints that we get quite a bit is blocked, our blocked crosswalks. And I just want to share with, uh, you that there is an ADA wheelchair passage standard that we have to comply with as a city. That minimum clearance width of an accessible route shall be 36 inches. And that's the standard by which we determine whether a ticket should be issued and what we expect Serco employees to use, the same standard. So you see on the top left there, there's a rolled curb. This is where most of the time that violations of blocking either park or most of the sidewalk occurs is because these rolled curves, it makes it very easy for a driver to pull up onto the sidewalk. And on the top there, you'll see that that's really the ideal location of where the car should be parked. And in the bottom picture, there's a, an example of not having 36 inches of clearance and that person, uh, may receive a citation. On the right, there's a flyer that we hand out. It's a public works version. There's a police version and then a generic city version that we, we hand out quite a bit. And that, and it's also posted on our website. Here's a couple of examples of why we would write tickets. So on the car on the left is a sidewalk completely blocked by the vehicle. So a person with a stroller or walking or a, uh, wheelchair cannot get past that vehicle. It has to go out into the street and then to, to pass the vehicle. On the right, it's a pickup truck in a driveway that's too short for the truck. This is a common one where driveways have, uh, either items being stored in front of the, the vehicle or the driveway just isn't long enough for the, the long vehicle. And again, the person passing by has to walk out onto the street. Uh, here's two examples. The one on the right is really what we like to see in the neighborhood. It's that's, uh, San Mateo Street where everyone is in compliance. Find that once we get compliance, this is the, the social etiquette that you see in parking that's very positive. And visitors from another neighborhood or another city will come in and see that cars are parking in this banner and will, will comply with that. Once you, we get a couple of cars starting to creep into the sidewalk, uh, everybody starts to creep up into sidewalks. We like to stay on top of that as much as we can. The car on the left is, uh, an example where it's nearly almost all on the sidewalk, but we're not going to give that a ticket because there's plenty of sidewalk space for someone to safely walk by. Now technically, it could receive a ticket, but it's our culture and our practice not to do so. Uh, we want to talk about a little bit more about this rolled curb problem that we were, or complaint that we have in some neighborhoods. And back in 2019, in December, we decided to, uh, initiate a pilot program and parking enforcement staff went out to that community and issued over 3,000 courtesy notices on every vehicle in the neighborhood in one week. So those are the flyers on the right there that we, we passed, our staff passed out. The following three weeks, 185 block sideways parking citations were issued in that same neighborhood. Then in January for the month though, we dropped, that number dropped down to 45 citations and in February down to 14. So showing that enforcement does work and over time, there is a plateau of compliance that once we start receiving the compliance, the numbers, the citations go down. And that'll be important, just a couple of minutes here. I'll share that with you. Uh, vehicle abatement, uh, the city authorized the hiring of two, two full-time vehicle abatement officers as part of this restructuring of our parking enforcement program. And then, uh, in October of 2019, we initiated that open recruitment. We limited to the first 50 applicants and in that group, uh, we, we had three viable candidates. Unfortunately, two were disqualified during their background investigations and the remaining candidate was hired and she started on April 20th of 2020. The remaining vacant position is held frozen due to fiscal uncertainty from the pandemic. She's just being fiscally responsible at this time. And she's able to, uh, have the assistance of our traffic community service officer. So we're, we're able to still meet the needs of people. Let's talk about Serco performance for a minute. Uh, we've received a lot of compliments and praises with Serco services. Uh, the chief being that they've been very attentive to complaints of wanting to have enforcement in a particular area. Uh, there has been a couple of complaints about their staff and I'll share those right now. Uh, Serco staff was seen not wearing their face mask while in their vehicles. Uh, another occasion, Serco staff was seen not wearing their face mask walking to and from their offices. And then on one occasion, a Serco employee was seen resting in his vehicle. I'm not going to, I don't know if he was napping, but I guess he was, had the chair back in. Ultimately, uh, through their investigation, they found the employee was on a slouch break. Uh, the news is Serco has GPS tracking and monitoring devices on all our vehicles. So we know where they are, what they're doing, how long they're spending in any particular location. It's a lot of, uh, supervision in that regard. Our police staff routinely meets with Serco field supervisors and our regular communication with Serco management. Every week we have conversations in person or over the phone, in person meeting in front of the PD six feet apart. Uh, but mostly it's through email where we communicate about things that are coming up. If Serco has a question about, should we be writing tickets for X? They'll take a photo, send us an email and then we can advise them on what course of action to take. Uh, the police report no issues or concerns at this time with Serco. Uh, some cost impacts, council approved an agreement with Serco in the amount of $3.7 million. Uh, this is a three-year term ending in November of 2022. The city has built into the contract the option for two one-year extensions ending in November of 2024. Uh, Serco is paid on a flat rate based on how we work and not on a per ticket basis. There's no quotas as, uh, say in the second, the third line there. Uh, we believe that with uniformity, consistency and focused enforcement, this encourages compliance and citations will likely be the highest in initial months, but could plateau after the first year. You, nevertheless, using those figures that Serco's provided and our estimation, citation revenue is to be, to be received by the city is estimated at 1.8 million for the first year and we're on track of, of not having to incur any expenses. Uh, under the old service delivery model, there's a table here, uh, to show that gross revenues was 975,000. Citations processed, cost minus 75,000, operating cost of 778. And then that net revenue of 122,000. Under the new model, our costs are ringing in more money, but our costings go up. And so the net revenue is about 158,000. So a slight bump, but nothing overwhelming. Uh, more citations are being issued, but there is an increase in citation processing and operating costs. Uh, the goal enforcement is to change behavior and not to generate revenue. Can't stress that enough. So our recommendation is that we continue with the, the current enforcement model. Uh, I think we need to give it more time to see how the, what's, what the real effects are going to be. So far, uh, we've seen positive changes. We've heard positive things and, uh, it's been a positive experience with working with Serco. So with that, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions and thank you for your time and patience on this.
Thanks Sergeant Hagan. Great presentation. Thank you so much. Lots of information in there. Uh, I'm going to open it up to the councilmembers for questions first.
So I.
I saw councilmember Pappin. Go ahead.
I just have two questions. So, uh, the first question relates to, um, Officer Hagan, if you've gotten any, um, feedback that doing that rolled curb parking so that we're allotting sufficient space for a wheelchair to get by, it's making the street too narrow because people are parking more in the street to accommodate that. That's the first question. And then the second question is, have you gotten feedback on the most impacted neighborhoods that they're really, uh, grateful that enhancement has increased? Cause I remember when we took this up and the biggest issue was people kept saying, well, you have all these signs up about restricting parking, but nobody ever comes by and enforces it. And the neighborhoods were very frustrated by that. So Mike, well, there are two questions. One is, are people complaining about the narrow streets? And two, are we getting feedback that we're achieving what our residents really wanted with hiring outside and having more enforcement?
Yeah, so that, those are great questions. And yes, the street does narrow. We've found in the neighborhoods where we did the pilot program and I'm not going to call out any particular neighborhood at this time, but there are neighborhoods where the narrowing has occurred. There was an initial complaint from some people that one of the byproducts of narrowing that, that street is that people slow down. So they're more cautious when they're driving. So there's a side benefit of having that. And the people that are near schools and in the parks where they needed to have access because of their children have, uh, are very grateful that we were enforcing the, the current roll curb problem that they were reporting. Some areas of the city we're finding, uh, got more attention in the past with, before Serco than they are now. And the neighborhoods now that we have Serco are receiving that attention. In the neighborhoods that we were spending our time in is because that's where we were receiving complaints. We were complaint-driven. So with the transition to Serco, there was no transition in, well, I can't believe that you're writing tickets or I need you to come out because they were already accustomed to that because of the complaints that we were receiving. As far as I think the second question you had was about, can you just remind me of that? That was, uh.
All right. Uh, so the second question dealt with, uh, the neighborhoods where we really were hearing that there was, um, parking restrictions, but never being enforced.
Yeah.
Are we more present now and we're hearing that, thank goodness, you finally got us some enforcement?
Yeah, so that, the, I'll just use, uh, street sweeping as the, apply the best example for that. And we, or under our old model, we had parking enforcement staff that was what I'd call transitory. So they, they were college kids and getting a college kid to wake up at four in the morning every day to go out and do street sweeping enforcement was tough. There were days where we would hit site A very well and then site B, the kids wouldn't show up. And so those, those sides of the street didn't, didn't get their tickets. And so the, the community would call and say, hey, it's not fair that you're giving my, my side of the street more tickets and not my neighbor. And they deserve to get tickets because they're not moving. That has changed now that we have Serco and consistent staffing to provide the adequate enforcement each day. We're not seeing those complaints. And then the neighborhoods, again, I don't want to call out any specific neighborhoods that weren't receiving the love because they weren't, weren't big complainers, but they were asking for it, are now receiving that. And we're, we're hearing. And we're we're hearing some strong praises from people that are are vocal. Hopefully we'll hear from some of them tonight. But uh it's it's been, it's been positive. There are some neighbors, I'll say up higher in the hills that are probably a little not used to seeing uh parking enforcement. So there's been some adjustment to them realizing that, okay, this is a real thing and now we need to be paying attention about how we how we park. So there is some some adjustment for some neighborhoods, but overall, it's been, it's been very good.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappin and Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so I guess my question is is related to Councilmember Pappin's question in that it seems like um we wouldn't necessarily be getting a lot of communication when people are happy. But when people are happy, we get like less complaints for something like this. And um you know, before, if we use my mailbox or my phone as a gauge, before we started this, I would be getting at least three complaints uh a week for various um unenforcement, like not enforcing issues. And now I barely get any, but now it's flipped to when other people are affected the other way, when they actually get a citation. Now, now it's like a different group of people, but that's it affects them. So that's when they, that's when they complain. And my my question is, what are we doing on communication to not only just say, okay, everybody, we're going to be enforcing, but also explaining um some of the benefits, like taking the public through the thought process here? Because that seems to be what I what I do a lot personally is is talk about, well, you know, all your neighbors were complaining before and now um and now we do not getting those complaints, but you've got you got um a ticket for parking on the road curb. So um and now you're upset about this, which by the way, you know, we're pretty lenient on these things. But how are we doing like on next door and other things that have like a a public? I I don't know if you would call it public relations, but just a public communications on on all this stuff we're talking about here.
Yeah, it's I think that that's a you hit the nail on the head where we we are the same way. We get first, we're getting complaints for not being out there and then we're complaints for for being out there. The messaging, I felt that we thought that we had a good grasp of it with uh when we reintroduced enforcement back from June fifteenth from our from our meeting, that uh we were messaging out from all the PIOs in the city in every possible way. And it's still, we were missing people from getting surprised even two months later that we were back out there doing enforcement. I don't think there's a a magic number or magic way to to get it out there. Uh maybe we could do a better job of, well, it's it's hard. We we've discussed this internally about what areas are new and what what is considered a new enforcement model for that neighborhood? And how do we get that out to Circle to do warnings? So we've asked them to be very lenient. I still want to be very, very soft. But there's always going to be, somebody's going to be upset for having received a ticket. People just, they don't. It's inherently a negative contact because someone's being told they're doing something wrong and there's a penalty assessed to that. And for some people, they're just, they're upset about that or it's embarrassing. But I think that having our press people continue to remind them of the world curb thing, for example, it just goes, it goes back so far in history that it's on our website. It's been there for a long time. We passed out flyers and yet we're still find people who are surprised when they see that we see that ticket.
Right. But I guess my my question is not on improving in communication that we're going to be enforcing. Because I think we you did about as good as you could possibly do in terms of getting the word out. But there's always going to be people that are missed. I guess my my um my thoughts and my question was revolved a little bit more around spreading the narrative of how we're making it safer for everybody and how we're making uh our neighborhoods a better place to live. And like, so for example, in the battle of next door and the battle of Facebook or wherever people are are discussing this now, having residents that that are not now happy, really happy of what's going on right now, being able to chime in and explain what we're doing and just um and just making it a little bit easier on the person who got the ticket that thinks that they were wronged. So I guess it's a different, one is spreading out an alert, we're going to be ticketing now. The other is 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 kind of more positive and talking about all the good things you're doing for our neighborhoods. That's
Yeah, yeah, I think I think the it's something that we took for granted. I know that I have. And you just reminded me of uh your your comments now is the neighborhood association meetings, neighborhood meetings that we're not attending anymore. I don't know if they're being held in Zoom or in some fashion, but that was a great way for us to get out and talk about those concerns and have the message repeated out by the community members who are hearing the complaints as well or who are on next door. And that that's a mechanism, I think, that our staff needs to to figure out. How do we get back out to the neighborhoods and have those meetings? Maybe we need to uh uh have our press people start getting a hold of all the association presidents and start having those meetings so that people we want to hear, we want to hear about what's happening out in their neighborhood. And the positive things too, sharing the success stories. We're not very good at doing that. I think that's an industry. We'd be better at that. But also hearing from our community members about the performance that Circle is doing because we're not in direct contact with them every day and know all the things that they're doing. But I like to hear from our community to make sure that we're not missing something that's really, really important. So I think I I should be able to say that I could commit that we're going to look at reintroducing those. We're finding ways to communicate with the associations better, even if it's just through email and offering our uh an invitation for us to meet with them on Zoom or some other mechanism here teams. Uh one of the things that we did do, we were anticipating back in when we were just about to start with Circos is meet with associations and then that's what COVID was hitting and we were scheduling those out. And and unfortunately, we keep waiting for COVID to just disappear and we're going to be able to meet in person, but as you know, isn't happening.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Um, thank you, Sergeant, for the presentation. I was listening on the telephone. So um and I was experiencing technical difficulties, but I was following along. And um I I just wanted to kind of um dovetail on some of the comments that were made by um Councilmember Pappin and Rodriguez about um about this looping in on the neighborhood associations. And also potentially, I would I would just add to that list, Neighborhood Watch. And um and then our age-friendly um cities task force who which prioritized pedestrian safety as a key priority. And I think that the idea of um of pushing the narrative of what it, you know, the the benefits are in terms of making our streets safer um and the pedestrian safety value of um of being able to walk down the street or, you know, wheelchair down the sidewalk, um making cars go slower um in residential neighborhoods. And the point that we're not doing enforcement to um to generate revenue. That 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 is, I think, um I think that's where the a lot of the misconceptions and the harm um is the perceived harm is stems from is, you know, this was, this was unnecessary to generate revenue for the city. This is a taking from me um for you, and that's not the case. And I think that that's a, that's a really important component of the public education piece. And so I would just um, you know, add those ideas to the pot here.
I appreciate that and hopefully my voice didn't put you to sleep. The uh the message of of getting better communication out to the communities is being well well heard right at this very moment. You, everyone's making a really good point. And uh I can say that we we, there's always room for improvement in that area. And the things that you're talking about about getting out to these groups, the age-appropriate groups and uh is really, really important and to to share our story and to show our successes. One of the challenges that I think in police work we have, just in general, is that when we do a good job, nobody really knows it because nothing bad happens. And we don't, we don't talk about those successes.
And I had a question just in terms, do we track who we give warnings to or is that just a blanket flyer?
So there's two levels of warnings. There is the courtesy notices that we don't track. We just look at how many flyers are passed out. And then the actual handwritten tickets, there's a button that says warning. So on the bottom said, there's no fine amount. This is just a warning. Those are the ones that we relate to for our data, but uh there's a lot of flyers that are passed out. And we don't track those. We just track out the volume of of flyers that that are disseminated.
So when there's an appeal for a um for a citation, is it factored in that the person has been warned before for the same infraction?
If there's a record of that, yes. And a lot of times when we're we're awfully lenient is that we'll reduce a uh citation down to a warning. And so that remains with the record of the license plate. So the next time there's a an offense, we can see, okay, well, this person received a warning three months ago for the same exact violation. And we're less likely to to let that one go.
Okay. And what's the timeline for the ALRPs?
Uh November of this year.
Soon, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully we'll report back soon on that.
Uh I'm gonna ask the people who are joining us to raise their hand if they have a public comment, but first I'm going to go to Councilmember Benia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. Um I've noticed some people in their comments, in their complaints have uh spoken as if we have somehow enacted some new laws that we never enforced before. They must be new. And so why are you picking on me, right? Um so I have to ask you, have we made any new parking laws that we're now playing gotcha with?
No, there's nothing new. And a lot of the laws that that they're we're enforcing are in the vehicle code. So it's it's assumed that when a person receives their curb license, that they understand those those laws that are there. And nothing that we're doing is uh outside the the norm or the anything we've done before. In fact, I think we're probably doing less than we than we normally would. We're not as aggressive as where as our enforcement used to be. Yeah.
Good, thank you. So that kind of leads me to my next question because um people don't seem to be aware really of, I mean, you're mentioning that they're assume they know, but quite a few people don't really seem to be aware of that what they're doing is illegal. And I see people say, well, I've been parking this way for thirty years or in this place for twenty years. And, you know, they 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 don't seem to know. Is there some way that we might want to consider having a link someplace for people to look at to see what the laws are regarding parking?
Uh I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but that's in the works.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um just in in follow-up to Councilmember Benia's question. So I do um I do know that we're not making up new laws, but I but I have um had experiences um personally and all throughout my personal neighborhood. So I'm and I'm assuming it happens other where other um areas where for thirty years, uh a obscure um code or something was not uh enforced ever. And then all of a sudden, Circle shows up and starts issuing um these these uh these citations. And and I I think that in these cases, in in my case, it was parking on the wrong side. I happen to live on a pretty quiet street and whatever way I'm I'm facing, I pull, I park on my on my street. And um and so when I talked with the city manager about this, um he said that, well, these are kind of not that big of issues, um but it would be if it was like a artillery street or is a, it was an important street. But if it's a small residential issue uh street, we shouldn't be um, we shouldn't be enforcing these. And I guess my que- my follow-up question that Councilmember Benia kind of sparked is not only do we not, is it hard to figure out what the rules are? But I think that there might need to be some cleaning up of some codes that if we're not going to enforce it for thirty years and then we enforce it for a little bit and then we decide not to force it again, maybe it shouldn't be, maybe that code should be kind of a little bit more concrete on what it is or altered or revisited. Um that and have we considered doing anything like that?
Yeah, the you you picked a really the best example possible to talk about and that was parking on the wrong side of the road. When Circle first went out into service, we instructed them that was a violation that's important to some neighborhoods and other neighborhoods not. But we didn't specify where they should use some more uh softer approach to warning the neighborhood about it. They just went out and said, okay, there's a car on the street, parked the wrong way, it's going to get a ticket. And our past practice, our our uh preferred practice is to not issue those tickets to vehicles that are on non-hazardous roadways, like you're talking about residential neighborhoods. And really, the rule of thumb now that they they follow is if the road is divided with bot dots or painted lines, then we want them to issue the the wrong way parking ticket. Uh we didn't, we didn't really train them very well. Those those are some of the learning, growing pains that I think that that's on our end. It's our fault. Circle was doing what we asked them to do. We just weren't clear in our instructions. It's a, you you always reminded it like, I'm sure you have, you know, with your kids, you talk about if you're not careful about how you give them instructions, sometimes they take it literally and they do things. You're like, that's not what I meant. And so we have to be better communicators and instruct our uh our staff, our kids, whoever with more more clarity in what we're expecting and the reason behind it. So Circle has since changed their their practices on that. There are, there are, and I think um some of the council members, I mean, you and you as well, have attended meetings where wrong way drivers in some neighborhoods is a is a really big deal and they really, really want that enforcement. But we just have to be uh responsible and consistent throughout the city about how we do it. And when we deploy them out with anything that we want them to do new, which will be, I don't, the only thing left is that's the sign parking for two hour uh restrictions is to just be clear about what our expectations are and why and the culture. And as they, the longer they're here with the city, the more they learn that. We learned uh the, what I call the parking etiquette of each neighborhood. You you have a street where you probably park or used to parking in your same spot. Your neighbors know where they park and that's the etiquette that you have formed informally amongst yourself. And you don't want to disrupt that because if there's peace and harmony that's happening in that street, there's no reason for us to come in and change that.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Hagan. I'm going to go to our public comment at this point, starting with Nisha.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Nisha, thank you. Welcome. Uh we can hear you.
Hi, um so I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood. Um we're right by, right off the Hillsdale exit, actually. And I I'm not sure, but I think I'm in a non-RFPP zone. So uh am I to understand correctly that parking will be enforced now in the two-hour window for the street?
You'd like me to answer that, Mayor?
Uh, yes, Nisha, I think you're muted again. We're going to answer your question. And if you have more questions, feel free to unmute yourself. Uh Sergeant Hagan, thanks.
Yeah, so the simple answer is no. We have not begun enforcement of that of those signs. And we're tying that, we're probably going to wait till the schools are more opened up and there's some more uh need for to ensure there's parking inventory in the areas that have those signage. So for now, no.
Okay, thank you very much and I appreciate everyone's empathy in this situation. As you know, uh there's lots of working parents and kids uh in this area. So uh this is one less thing to stress about. So thank you.
Thank you, Nisha. And I, Nisha brings up an excellent point, which is that uh Bay Meadows has plenty of parking. And part of that is because the people who live there don't have a lot of cars, which is the whole point of Bay Meadows, which was a fantastic uh thing to realize that transit-oriented development works. Linda Hansen Raj.
Hi, thank you, City Council. Um I'd like to make four points about my own experience with Circle. I live in a neighborhood that uh no one was ticketed for thirty years. My parents uh bought this house and then I bought it from them in two thousand and eight. And uh everybody, it's on a hill, so and it's fairly narrow, so everybody uh parks on the curb. And we were a neighborhood that I'd like to point out on the June fifteenth flyer is not mentioned um as being ticketed. Um and we never, no one on this block uh or the nearby blocks received any warnings about this. Um and I feel that the this ticketing, this aggressive ticketing by Circos creating unnecessary ill will towards the city government and the police department at a time where people are need to work from home, they're forced to work from home. They continue to be ill uh and need to isolate at home and a time when people are unemployed. So that was one thing. The second point is that there seems to be no accountability for Circle. Uh when I called to complain to the police department, um that no one had received any warnings uh that um I was unable initially to speak to the traffic sergeant until I spoke to Circle. After you call Circle and leave a message, no one responded to me. And when I finally was able to speak to the traffic sergeant, um you know, the response was that Circle is not a part of the police department and answers to the city council, which it's very unclear when you look at who Circle is responsible to or accountable to, who they answer to and how we can get answers from Circle. So to this day, Circle has never responded to my call. Um, you know, and it, so is it the city council who's who they're accountable to? Is it the police department? The, my third point is Circle's hardly is, well, Circle has a number of uh
Thirty more seconds, Linda. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thirty more seconds. Okay, number of problems. They are accused of fraud, civil rights violations, They are accused of fraud, civil rights violations, allegations, environmental violations, and they pay their employees poorly and that, um, it's hardly a foreign company that we would want to be allied with or much less partner with. And I think that when the city wants to have affordable housing for, um, its residents, but won't pay for a full-time parking officer or several of them, um, in the police department, that's, uh, an irony. I mean, I would rather have a police officer, a full-time police officer paid with benefits, retirement, than some poor Serco employee that's paid minimum wage writing my tickets.
You had one more point, Linda?
That was, I just wanted to make those points.
Okay, thank you. Kieran, excuse me, Jason Pike?
Hello, Mayor. It goes, it's Pack actually, but there's no problem with that. It is, uh, I, I get that a lot.
Mr. Pack, welcome.
Uh, thank you, honorable council members for the opportunity to speak. And I, I really wanted to say that I really appreciate the hard work of yourselves, the city staff and the police during the pandemic. You guys have done an incredible job in these difficult circumstances. Really thank you. Uh, my name is Jason Pack. I'm also a resident of Bay Meadows. I would like to speak in favor of continuing reduced enforcement of parking restrictions in our neighborhood. When the pandemic started, we lost access to our daycare for our two-year-old and now we have a newborn. We were lucky enough to have resources for a backup option for a caretaker who was able, who was able to come to our home that would allow both my wife and I, who are physicians, to continue to work. This was in part possible because of the relaxed enforcement of parking restrictions, which allowed the caretaker to avoid getting ticketed. If full parking enforcement was implemented again, it could lead us to lose access to this childcare. I am very pleased to hear today from Sergeant Hagan's presentation that, uh, our neighborhood appears to be a non-RFPP zone and it is not expected that enforcement is, is to be expected in the near term. However, we were alerted by our neighborhood association leadership regarding some confusion at the, at the vendor level regarding enforcement. So in the absence of a permitting program for residents of our neighborhood, we really want to kindly request that the council provide specific directive to our police and vendor to continue reduced enforcement of parking restrictions in non-RFPP zones or perhaps more specifically in our neighborhood, uh, during the duration of the pandemic. Uh, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pack. Kieran Gojankor.
Uh, thank you. Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the time and the great presentation. So I'm also a Bay Meadows resident and appreciate the willingness to extend, um, the, uh, lack of enforcement for the two-hour zone. I think just to, just to add to what, uh, Jason said is that I think, you know, we, we, one of the reasons we haven't been in enforcement situations is because we've all been forced to park in our, park our cars into our, inside our garages, right? And, and really what I'm using my garage for now is essentially for my kids to play or for me to work from home, right? And just to comment around, looking at enforcement, again, when schools resume, I don't see us going back to the office for at least another, you know, eight to 12 months potentially, right? And even then, when we do, we're probably going to be in a hybrid working environment moving forward. So I know there's been a lot of debate about the transit-oriented development and, you know, whether people own or do not own cars. But definitely we continue to see even pre-pandemic issues around providing parking for caregivers, abuse of visitor parking by residents who are not, uh, following the CCNRs. So I'd like the council to definitely think about moving forward. What is the solution for, for, for current parking, uh, in Bay Meadows on the street, right? And I think, um, you know, I'd like them to consider the resident parking program, um, moving forward, uh, when the opportunity arises. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. I don't see any other public comment. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Drew.
Good afternoon. I was, just wasn't sure how many people were going to speak, so maybe wasn't going to speak. So thank you for your patience. So, uh, appreciated the presentation and I'm going to tie the, my comment in part into, um, what the police have been presenting these last many months, uh, because of the Black Lives Matter and just the sensitivity. And I wonder about off, off, uh, off-hour parking enforcement. And that would mostly be around red, red, uh, red zones or crosswalk ADA ramp type stuff in the neighborhood where I'm at, because we have a lot of, uh, a lot of parking needs. There will be cars parking in red zones and sometimes over the ADA ramps. And when we've called, the police have been phenomenal. They do a great job. I just sometimes wonder that why have a sworn officer doing this at, in, like at nine o'clock or midnight versus someone in the parking enforcement? I'm sure there's hotspots in the city and doesn't need to be staff 24/7 type of thing. But having a route like in the, in the evening or in the night, it doesn't have to be a two-hour. It's not about the two hours. It's more just about people parking in situations that are unsafe and causing problems. Uh, across walk, crosswalks, especially the ADA ramps and the red zones at intersection type stuff. And then those officers, you know, it may be equivalent to half of an officer or something. I try to wait to call unless it's really bad and I'm not expecting enforcement if a bumper is in the red zone. It's like cars are like halfway in the red zone or something. It's not just, oh, well, they're a little bit in the red zone. That's not the kind of enforcement I'm talking about. It's, you know, someone's more substantially blocking stuff. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Drew. Uh, phone number ending in four, two, seven. Do you have a public comment? You might want to hit it again. It looks like you're muted. Phone number ending in four, two, seven. Looks like you're still muted. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Oh, phone number ending in four, two, seven. Do you have a comment? Okay. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, uh, for some final thoughts and direction. I think everybody made a lot of comments. Councilmember Lee.
I just, I actually wanted to follow up on one of the comments that was made about the question of accountability and, um, and procedurally what the, um, you know, what the management structure is. I think that's, um, that's worth clarifying for the record.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Uh, currently the Serco reports directly to the police department. So all complaints about their performance and what they're doing should be directed to us. There are, there are two traffic sergeants here and both of us are going to be the ones that respond back to community concerns or questions related to that. My, my email is available on the website as well as surgeon create columns. I encourage anyone who has a concern or just a question to go ahead and email us or call us directly. We'll, we'll follow up with them in a timely fashion. I think a lot of times, uh, council members, you, you all receive emails and you see that we're always, we're pretty attentive responding to those, uh, questions and concerns pretty quickly.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you. I guess, uh, one quick comment, um, from the speaker, Ms. Hassan Raj. You know, we tried to do this, um, full-time and have, uh, inhabit under our police force. And for the many reasons, uh, that were, were touched upon in this presentation, it did not work. And we're finding that this is working. Uh, we're still getting some kinks out of the, of the, of the rope as we're trying to make this work. But, um, but we, we did try other things and, and I personally think that this is the best way to go. Um, I support, um, uh, the staff's recommendation in continuing this. Um, I do, I would just like to reiterate, um, the communications piece. And I think that's an excellent, uh, idea to strengthen the communication with the, with the neighborhood associations. A lot of them, they're meeting less frequently, but they are still meeting. They're getting more used to the Zoom, um, part of it. And they also have mailing lists that they can, they could, um, you know, send emails to for communication. I think that one of the things that, um, that are the, the, that our police department has always done well, and I'd like to see them do well in this case, is, is recruiting like the community, um, to understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, so they become advocates and they help. They help with enforcement. They help as communicating. They help, um, they can be your best friends in terms of, um, public relations. So, um, I, I really liked your ideas there and I look forward to the next time you give us an update. Um, there's going to be a lot, uh, this information is going to be disseminated a lot, uh, more effectively. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Benia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, well, first I have a comment. I think that this clearly Serco is, uh, um, a work in progress, right? It's something that I believe we needed because we were not having, uh, uh, evenly spread or adequate, um, uh, enforcement. And people were frustrated with lack of regular enforcement. Uh, although, you know, um, so, I mean, we need to just give it a little more time. Kinks are getting worked out of the system, right? The, the comment that I heard though, which concerned me was the lady's comments. And I'm not sure exactly which woman said this, but it had to do with, um, I guess it was the same lady who made four points, Linda Hassan Raj. Uh, about their status as an employer, which you know is always something that gets my attention. To the extent that she says that, um, these people don't have full-time jobs. I'm wondering, can we get some kind of a report on what, if anything, our contract with them specifies about whether or not they have an eight-hour-a-day job with a 40-hour week? And do we ever, when we're seeking to re-qualify these people who respond to our RFPs, do we ask them, I mean, just for comparison purposes, about what benefits they may offer, uh, besides those which are required by law? Just, you might find that you get, uh, one offer, uh, who for the same amount or a similar amount is offering great benefits and full-time jobs while another one isn't. I'd like to be able to see if we can, uh, learn about how that is done and be able to discuss how it gets done in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Please.
Yeah. So we, uh, we actually during the, the, the vetting process required that the, the, the employees pay them a certain base pay, a minimum floor. And then when we were in, we were in a conversation with Serco in our, in our contract negotiations, we bumped that up to even a little bit more. So they're, they're making more than our, than our, our existing employees. They're all full-time employees and they do get benefits. So we wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, having people work for us that are working in our, our community were kept whole and able to be, uh, uh, on livable wage was very important to us. And I don't remember what the hourly rate is, but it, it was higher than what Serco originally quoted us. We're paying for that, so our, our costs went up. But I think that, uh, as a community, we are, it's, it's worth the extra investment to have that. So we're, so our employees are treated fairly and equitably.
So, so, thank you, Sergeant. I, I have a question though. Is that actually specified in our contract? Or do we ask for that in our RFP when we put it forth?
No, it was in the contract. It wasn't in the RFP. We, we left the RFP more broadly, uh, designed so that, uh, we didn't want to drive home answers. We wanted to hear what people had to offer and opportunities to present their, their, their case to us without, uh, any restrictions or expectations.
And then you're able to ask questions and see what responses you get and make your decisions from there?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Councilmember Lee, you have another comment?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're responding to the Bay Meadows concerns about, um, about the continuation of the relaxed parking enforcement and that we have a path forward for any changes. Um, how, like what is the, what would be the, the timeline and the process for enforcement changes to that area? Um, would that come back to council or would that be something that, um, that is decided internally through public, you know, education and notification and communication?
I think the best person to answer that would be Drew. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's quite all right. Um, this, the, the, this particular issue has been, has been one that we've, we've spent a lot of time internally discussing um, because, um, you know, Bay Meadows is unique as, as the mayor pointed out. They don't have a parking, excuse me, they do not have a parking inventory problem. So, uh, the neighborhood's request to, to not enforce is really not problematic, um, because there's parking inventory there. However, the problem is, is we have a number of other areas in the city that do have the two-hour restrictions that are non-RPPP areas, um, where there are some inventory problems. And so, um, we, we decided on balance that continuing to not enforce in those areas made sense for the time being. Um, but, but we are still grappling internally with, uh, with what this looks like come 2021, um, when we, we do get increased calls to enforce the other areas and we have one area in Bay Meadows where there, there is a continued desire in the community to not enforce and, and there's really no reason to enforce. And so we, we have to look to see, see what we can do. Um, obviously we want to try to, um, you know, do things equitably throughout the city, but we also don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face. If we have an area that doesn't have an inventory problem and it doesn't necessarily make sense to enforce, um, we have to, we have to look at that. So, so we will come back, um, be, before, we will come back to council before we, uh, change the, the two-hour enforcement. And, and like, uh, Sergeant Hagan said, for the time being, we will continue to not enforce. But, uh, we're, we're going to continue to discuss internally longer-term solutions that, that try to meet the needs of as much of the community as possible.
Can I follow up on that? Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember.
If I just could request that part and parcel of that process be some form of collecting data as to the lifestyles, um, that people have once we transition, you know, from complete COVID to maybe partial COVID. Um, I know it's a fluid situation, but having information as to what people's lifestyles consist of will help us as to we, as we go forward with what, where we should have enforcement and where we shouldn't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I was just going to add that in Bay Meadows specifically, um, all of their curbs everywhere are two-hour restricted, whereas many neighborhoods, many neighborhoods don't have any restrictions at all. So you can park in some neighborhoods on the curb for months at a time without any enforcement at all. And there's no areas like that. Every single curb in Bay Meadows is two-hour enforced. So it's just, it, that's also a uniqueness to, to Bay Meadows. And, and so it makes more sense not to enforce it there because they don't have any, um, curbs that are, that are not two-hour restricted. Anyway, um, things that we will continue to look at. I really appreciate the presentation tonight, Sergeant Hagan. This is a double-edged sword. We know that when there's not enough, uh, enforcement, people are going to complain. And when there's too much enforcement, people are going to complain. And, uh, there's no such thing as perfect. So, uh, carry on, sir. Thank you very much for that. We have our regular meeting starting at 7:00 PM. So people can get up and get a stretch and I'll see you back here at 7:00 PM. Thanks, everybody.